Woman Bayes and this is the education hearing of whether Baltimore City Schools should be able to raise funds for students. Councilwoman Peacock, Councilwoman Castleman Davis, Councilman Bryant, Councilwoman Bowens, Councilman Aduna, Councilman Haynes, Councilman Crawley, Councilman Garrett, Councilman Gilmer, Councilwoman Dorsey, Councilwoman Mills, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman McKnight and Councilwoman Simmons. All in attendance.
What's the topic you're gonna go into?
I said.
Okay, then you wanna ask who's gonna test, who would like to testify first?
Is there anyone who would like to testify first? Councilman Davis.
You're on.
Well, I think Baltimore City Public Schools should be able to raise funds because it can give kids a chance to show responsibility.
Councilman Aduna.
On kids funding for their programs because some schools like don't have enough money and like the teachers and principals don't wanna put in money to help us out so it will also give us an amount of responsibility and get us ready for the future if we wanna make our own businesses.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mills.
I think Baltimore City Schools should because it will give them more money, like they can raise more activities. It can get like more of the, more stuff for school, like activities and stuff. And yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Crawley.
Can I ask Councilman Davis to explain what does he mean by more responsibility and ask Councilman, um, Aduna, where would they get the funding?
Councilman Davis, explain your testimony.
Well, by giving out some responsibility, I mean like they could be able to like sometimes when kids get stuff, uh, like they could get something, they would buy something that they want instead of something that they need. This could get them responsibility to get stuff that they actually need instead of just want.
Thank you. Councilman Aduna, where would they get the money from?
They would get their money from if they're committed, they could go to different community organizations and ask for help and if the, first they'll send a proposal for like help for different materials for schools, then if the, um, the, uh, or the other organizations will vote to say yes or no. And if they say yes, they were like, some of them will start bringing in items or loaned them money.
Thank you. Councilman Davis.
Well, another reason why I think Baltimore City Public Schools should be able to raise money is because.
Hold your microphone to your, your mouth every time.
Well, I think they should be able to ma- make funds because what he just said, because without, cause other schools gonna start hearing about us and they going, wanna start loaning stuff to make our school better.
Thank you. Councilman Aduna.
I would like to, I would like to also add on his responsibility topic because in some schools, some teachers and adults don't give, don't trust us as kids, as little, you know, as youth. They don't trust us and they don't give us amount of responsibility, but if we show them that we have enough responsibility, we can be able to do a lot of things at the school that nobody's ever done.
I got a question. So, when you said that we gonna do things that nobody ever done, what type of things are you talking about?
Like what we're doing at Franklin Square, like we, like we'll be able to monitor ourselves, like the class president, the executive, uh, the officers in the class to monitor the class, the self-regulation.
Okay. Councilwoman McKnight.
I think that, um, that Baltimore City Schools should be able to raise funds for students because that'll, um, give us more money to like be able to go on trips and stuff and that'll make people act, that'll make our school actually stand out so we can get like community partners so we can, so they can help us leave a mark.
Councilman Crawley.
I'd like to ask Councilwoman McKnight, who would control this money?
Councilwoman McKnight, explain your testimony.
Um, can you repeat the question again?
Controlling this money, Councilwoman McKnight?
Um, um, I feel as though that, um, we are mature enough to handle and control, um, the money ourselves, so. I say that we'll be controlling the money.
Councilwoman Peacock.
Um, I agree with precious, I mean Councilwoman McKnight. I think that Baltimore City School, Public Schools should, um, let us promote to start nonprofit business because the money could be used for good causes like, um, graduations, field trips, and uniform, better improvement to the school.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson.
Oh, I agree with Jaleel, like it can be used for like school supplies and stuff, like better books and better desks and stuff for us. Desks like that we write on and stuff, and books.
Thank you. Councilwoman Simmons.
I think Baltimore City, I think Baltimore City Public Schools should have like, should do activ-, should do activities and programs for youth so they can stay off the streets and learn more stuff about the world and stuff.
What kind of activities you think should be held?
Like, like clubs and like programs, like violence program and like.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bowens.
I think Baltimore City Schools should permit, should permit us to start nonprofit business to raise money for schools because we can use it for rewards for the students and incentives and to go on field trips and stuff and by doing this, it will make the kids more interested in school and stuff.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKnight.
Oh, um, I agree with, um, Councilwoman Bowens. But I would like to add on, um, I also think they should allow us to raise funds for like extracurricular activities so that, um, like she said, so that um, they'll be more interested in learning and staying off the streets and they'll be able to be successful in life.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mills.
I agree with, um, Councilwoman Bowens and Councilwoman McKnight. And I would like to add on. I think we should because and like we can get like stuff like school supplies, like a store for snack, a store with snacks and chips and juices and, and like uniforms and stuff and activities.
So, this store that you're talking about with snacks and chips, this would be held inside the school?
Yeah, it can.
So, where would you put like the chips and stuff from peo- from getting it stolen and stuff like that?
It can be like in a special, something, like a cabinet or, um, or something.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Aduna.
I have a question for Councilman, Councilwoman Mills. So, about you said school supplies. It, why, when you get your school supplies, what will you do if many of the students might, uh, misplace them, break them? Or you know, use to do harm with it in school buildings? What you said about school supplies, what, what would you do if like many of the students end up losing their pencils, books, or start messing them up, or you know?
I would I would have I would control over that, like by doing something like by telling them or like by giving like, giving them a consequent, uh, consequence for doing what they doing.
So, that, do that means that if you catch them breaking a pencil, would you, would you whatever, would you do whatever consequences, like whatever, you know, you know?
Like they would not have to like, like they wouldn't buy stuff like buy like other stuff no more like for a while until they learn what to do with their stuff and how to do it. And, yeah.
Thank you, y'all too. Councilman Haynes.
I also have a question for Councilman, um, Councilwoman Mills. You said that you're gonna be selling snacks and juice and stuff, aren't you worried about the health concerns that comes with those things?
It will be, well, yeah, health concern isn't there, like it can be healthy stuff in there too, like, like fruit juices, um, yeah, fruits. Yeah, no doubt. Well, yeah, stuff like healthy stuff, it can be healthy stuff in there too.
Thank you. Councilman Gilmer.
So, I have a question also for you again. So, like you say it's like helps us, like how you gonna get them money to buy apples and oranges and all the types of vegetables and fruits?
First, we for like the business store and stuff, like to buy the stuff, to get the store and stuff. Like we can, we can have like donations, like X, like different organizations for donations and then we can get the store and then, yeah, then we can have like a budget for stuff.
What kind of donations, right?
For money, like it can be for like, yeah, like from different organizations like with you now and yeah, like that.
That's all.
I got a question for Councilman Mills, Councilwoman Mills. So, if, what if the organizations that you looking forward into not, don't have the financial abilities to give you the money to buy the snacks and stuff, where's your backup plan?
My backup plan would be, my backup plan would be to X other organizations or just like stay like, like those are how different people, like they do different stuff to get, um, like, yeah, like, like, yeah, like getting donations and money and stuff.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Garrett.
I got a question for Councilwoman Mills. Um, don't you think there should be like a limit on the snacks, like the chips and stuff and a limit on the healthy food? Like what kind of limit, like? Like, like the percentage that you like give out, like you'll have like how much you're gonna sell?
Well, it's gonna be first, I'm gonna make a budget, like so I can, a bu- well, first I'm gonna make a budget so I can like know how much I'm gonna buy to sell.
That's it.
Sergeant in Arms. Councilwoman McKnight.
Um, to answer your question, I say this is, um, for all schools in Baltimore City because, um, I know that we are not the only school that, um, wants like new books and desks and things of that nature because you should always wanna be in a place that you feel comfortable and something like be able to see things and hear things that interest you.
Oh, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Topman.
I would like to add on, it's like, it's for Franklin Square, but also for other schools. Like we trying to help lead them to where we at.
Councilwoman RJ, I mean, um, Jackson.
I agree with both of them, like I think it should be for all schools because like we not the only school that need like new stuff and stuff, like like, 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 yeah, like, like.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith.
Well, I think it's for all Baltimore City Public Schools, but we just specifically speaking from our perspective, but we also speaking in a perspective from the students. We are talking that we want this for all Baltimore City Public Schools, but we putting our, we putting our ideas into it because we are children, so we will also know what other children want and what they might see that we can have.
Sergeant in Arms.
Ms. Peacock have a question.
Who?
Council President, the, we have a question in the sense that how would you engage the other schools to get involved in this process?
Councilwoman Peacock.
Just to answer your question, um, already know that we doing a star room. Yeah, to get, we can have community sponsors come out and see the room that we made, the Star Center and like tell them how this is a room where kids run theirs out and like we can tell them come out.
That's good. Councilman Bryant.
I would like to question Councilman Woman Peacock, how would you reach out to the other schools?
Um, just that the community sponsors, they can come out, well, well, first we have to get them here. We can set up a meeting and talk to them about how students run themselves and yeah, or try to get out to the newspaper or tell kids and tell their parents and see if they can help us out too.
Councilwoman Si- Simmons.
I agree with Councilwoman Peacock, but, um, like we I'm going back to the other question, like the other question that she had, um, that we shouldn't like, these, this is for like all Baltimore City Schools, like we, when we have the activity stuff, just keep it all the, like, helping all the youths and stuff and they gonna learn more stuff if they not in the streets and door, still doing riots or drugs and stuff.
Thank you. Clerk Smith.
Well, to get other Baltimore City Public Schools involved in this, we can basically reach out to them by we could talk to their principal or talk to different schools, just like have different people go to different schools and see who, who would be interest, interested in having their child, in their children involved in something like this. And maybe they can survey their own children and see what they would like to be involved in things like that. And then if we get results back and majority wanna do it, then maybe we can talk to them and actually make this school nationwide.
Ooh, Councilwoman Daisy, I mean Dorsey.
I agree with Clerk Smith and I feel like if we do connect out to other schools that they will be involved in it because if you have the opportunity to raise money, people would like to use it to make their school much of a better school. So, I feel like other people, if we connect to them, they will be involved with it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garrett.
Um, I agree with Clerk Smith and, um, Councilwoman Dorsey. And I would like to add on, if we, um, like they said, we connect to other schools, it would make the students wanna be more engaged like we are and they would, um, have Franklin Square setting examples for other scholars and, um, schools.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKnight.
I agree with, um, Kirk Smith, um, Councilwoman Dorsey and, um, Councilman, mm, woman. Garrett, um, um, that if we do reach out to other schools, we can invite them to our school and show them how we self-regulate and how the teachers, administrators and other adults in the school do not police us. And we can exemplify that teenagers or children can make decisions for theirself and some children are actually mature.
Councilman Davis.
Well, I think we should start businesses to make more funds for more activities cause when it's, cause it's not as many activities so kids don't have nothing to do but to go outside and just do whatever they want. That's why I think it should be more activities so kids can have something to do instead of going outside and just running around looking for trouble.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peacock.
I have a question for Kirk, Kirk, yeah, oh, yeah, her. And, um, and Councilwoman Dorsey, Councilwoman Garrett and Councilwoman McKnight. How do y'all know if they would come, how do y'all know the principals will come out and even, even wanna talk to us if they don't even trust us? Trust us or believe in us that we have a room that is in charge of ourselves?
Clerk Smith.
Well, from our perspective, it's not teachers reaching out, it's us, the students, ourselves reaching out. So, maybe if they see that students actually wanna do this, students will wanna get the rest of their, their little peers and stuff involved in something that they would like, maybe they will actually put belief and trust into us because they see that we are students ourselves and we actually wanna get involved with something that's gonna help our school get better. That's gonna help L H, education and make us more interested in coming to L, into their schools and stuff. So, maybe if they see or hear from us, then maybe they will actually take the time and actually see what we, what type of effort we put forth into doing something that we would like.
Councilwoman McKnight.
Can you repeat your question, please?
Um, how would y'all know that the principals will even come out to even wanna see how we self-regulate ourselves? What if they don't even believe in us, over responsibility? Yeah, I'm there.
Um, well, um, I agree with Clerk Smith. It's not our principal or the adults that are at our school that are reaching out to them, it's the children. Um, so maybe they'll see that, um, we actually wanna be successful and be something that we know we can be in life and they'll start to believe in us and when they see how we self-regulate and how we handle ourselves and how we monitor ourselves, maybe they'll put their belief into us, so.
Clerk, Councilman Simmons.
I agree with all of y'all, but when if, when if they do wanna be in a program y'all setting and wanna be with y'all stuff, where's y'all gonna set all this stuff at, like where's y'all gonna be if, if they come out?
Councilwoman McKnight.
Alright, I say, when if the, the other kids from the other schools do want be in a program and stuff, where's y'all gonna set all this stuff at, like do y'all got a place for it?
I mean, we could have it at our school, we could have it at their school, we could have it at a recreation center of some sort, like there will always be a place where you can have a positive program to keep children in like, or to keep children from being pessimistic.
Thank you. Clerk Smith.
Well, there are different schools and different communities, so like different schools can pick different days or different weeks where they wanna do it at their school. Like we can do it at our own school and they can do it at their school because although it's different communities, we don't wanna just do it in one community where everybody can't get to it and everybody can't explore and see what we doing.
Thank you, Clerk Smith. Councilwoman Peacock.
Um, back to the statement that you made about, um, no, for, um, Councilman. Um, back to the statement that you made about um, no, for um Councilman McKnight. Back to the statement that you made, how do you know that the other students will agree with you? What if you the only person that think that you can succeed with this store?
Well, I know, um, to answer your question, I know I'm not the only student or teenager or child that um if you were in my perspective, like I know I'm not the only one that thinks this way. I know I'm not the only one that wants better for myself, better for my school, and better for my community. So I know even if there's one person that agrees with me, at least I won't be by myself in the dark.
Councilwoman Bowens.
Alright, I have a question. Do y'all know anyone who have done this before?
Councilwoman Simmons.
I don't know nobody who did this before, but we can, we can try do it and like make a difference and like be like, be the first people who did something like this and help kids with their success and environment and stuff.
Councilwoman Garrett.
Um, to answer Councilwoman Bowens' question, no, I don't know anyone who has done this. But we can always be the first into setting example and to make others wanna do what we are doing.
Um, y'all all did a great job, but it's time for this hearing to come to a close. Would anybody like to vote? Okay. I call for the question. Councilman Crawley.
I call for the vote. I call for the vote on the proposal to um allow Baltimore City Schools to develop um businesses to raise funds for students.
I asked for a second. Jeez, um. Councilman Bryant. Councilman Bryant seconds. Alright, I would like to take a roll call. Councilwoman Peacock, what's your vote? Four against. Councilman Davis. Councilman Bryant. Councilwoman Dorsey. Councilman Gilmer. Councilwoman Garrett. Councilwoman Bowens. Councilman Aduna. Councilman Haynes. Councilman Crawley. Ford. Council, Councilwoman Simmons. Councilwoman McKnight. Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Mills. And Sergeant in Arms. Oh, so.
Everybody was four.
The bill passes unanimously. This concludes the education hearing of the topic of whether Baltimore City Public Schools should be able to raise funds for the students. Thank you.